The call to order the city council work session for the CVS Grand Forks for Tuesday, June 12th is now five o'clock. Will the city clerk please call and roll?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel, council members Clarence Bader.
Here.
Mike Parkshavinsky.
Here.
Tim Reapell.
Here.
Henry Twetton.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Does term form number one, L E L S memorandum of understanding for K-9 unit, Mr. Murphy.
This was brought to the work session here a couple of weeks ago, a month ago maybe, for approval. At that point, it was recommended that it be brought back to Personnel Committee for further review and determine whether the MOU should be moved forward with or not. The Personnel Committee did meet on that. They did review it, did vote on that via email, and the recommendation from the Personnel Committee would be not to move forward with the MOU at this time without some modifications. However, in review with Alyssa as the city administrator, I am going to take this time to depart from where the Personnel Committee is and as my recommendation as city administrator that the council do approve the MOU. So we do have conflicting recommendations. So I will take any questions that you may have.
I also want to go on record. I was still one that did recommend to approve it. So I thought with the information that Mr. Murphy provided to us after our meeting and the discussions that went on during, when this first came around, those items were addressed in there. And I felt satisfied that we should move forward. I think it's needed and I will back it 100%. So, Mr. Demers.
I have a question for attorney. Is this considered labor negotiation or is this outside of...
I can't answer that question. I wish you would have asked me...
We don't typically discuss the merits of labor negotiations in open session. We vote on agreements, but we don't typically vote or discuss...
I guess that would be...
We don't discuss our negotiation strategy.
I guess that would be entirely up to the city council on how you wanted to handle it. I wasn't looking at it as labor negotiations myself, but whether it is or it isn't.
But it would be a memorandum of contract, correct?
It would be, that's what it says.
Right. So I guess it's up to the council too, but I just don't think this is a typical thing that we discuss. Not that it's, anybody should be afraid of discussing it. It's just that this is a negotiation and the city has an interest in discussing where we want to come out on it as a council before it's released to the public. And this is twice that we've had a position, a formal position in the city basically stated in public before we've had a chance to agree on it as a council. So I guess, I would say that this should be put into a closed meeting based on the bargaining. If that's not the case, I'm more than happy to discuss the merits of it in public.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Murphy, that the memorandum of understanding items were discussed prior in an open forum at a work session when this came forth. Am I correct or not?
As far as what we're specifically talking about, the extra half an hour per time, that was discussed at the February 6th, I believe, work session.
Yeah, I guess the only way this slides a little bit into a contract negotiation is the fact that it does include that half hour of time. In talking with community members about this and understanding the challenges that we have in law enforcement as for the drug challenge and wanting to be as thorough and comprehensive, timely, a lot of times when you have a moment like this, you wouldn't have time to call in to an affiliated agency and get the dog from some distance. And in talking to the community members, which I've talked to quite a few, without hesitation, they say, "I don't know what the big deal is. We need this." Right? It looks good. It looks helpful. Our chief and our police force say it's going to be a benefit in terms of good law enforcement. And you know what? We're going to find a way to cover the costs of it if it turns out to have to be a slight modification to someone's employment scenario. It's almost like you do that as a necessary component, but the greater question, you know, that one piece can't stop this. Right? We're not going to use that as an obstacle to stop what really needs to be done for the good of our community. And so whatever we have to do to mop that little detail up, it's a housekeeping thing more than it's anything else. It really is. Cause...
It's expensive. Housekeeping, that's $10,000 a year.
It's a number. I mean, it's a real number, but we have already discussed that number. The part that's housekeeping is how to address it in a contract. Right? We've decided already that that matches our community priority from a policing standpoint. It's real money.
But when this discussion came out, it was explicitly asked, what cost is it going to be? Is it going to raise wages? It was flatly denied that any of those things were going to happen. So I would say that there has been a bait and switch to this. And like you said, I'm not going to debate what the merits of the type of policing that we're doing or any of those type of things. Problem is, is when we were sold this, we were told it wasn't going to cost us anything. That there wasn't going to be an exorbitant amount of overtime, that there wasn't going to be all these things. Now, and I specifically asked, was this going to result in a pay raise? Were we going to be asked to give someone a pay raise because of this? No, we are not. We are, here's how it works in, throughout Minnesota, here's what happens. The amount of the officers compensated because they get called in more often, they have more overtime, like that. Okay. That was the impetus of why we needed a memorandum of understanding. So from that, it changed from, well, the officer's going to get called in more often, but not only that, we're also going to give them a raise. Because that, we don't have, I mean, it isn't called a raise, but we guarantee someone extra money.
Because they're working extra hours.
That wasn't part of the thing.
But they are. That's really what this is, is they're having to put in the time and they're going to get paid for the time that they put in.
Why don't they do their training during the day?
I'm going to say it fits into the schedule for patrol and everything else they're doing. I'm sure if they could fit it into the day, they would.
A half hour?
And that's a good question for chief, but I'm sure they have schedules and they have to be available for that time.
You can't get a half hour of training into the day.
The other thing on the cost factor that we've all known of is they're trying to fundraise for the front end costs, you know, toward the vehicle, toward the dog, toward the initial training and whatnot. We know there will be annualized costs for this. We've never ever been told anything but that. There will be an ongoing annual cost to this and we've tried our best to get our head around what that annual number is. And I think we've been presented some of those numbers. I don't know that they've changed from the early projections because they were general projections initially and we're starting to get more hard and fast numbers.
$10,000 might sound like it's chump change or whatever, but...
It's real money.
$10,000 is a quarter percent sales tax.
Real money.
Property tax increase.
It's real money.
And it used to be, it used to be almost, you know, almost a half a percent, you know. But because we've had these little creeps all over the place, that's, you know, our levy used to be $2.7 million. That was four. So all these $10,000 everywhere keep adding up. And everybody, you know, you just tack them up. Because this was absolutely not talked about as part of it. It was said that this was going to be, yeah, we're going to pay for it on the front end. We'll pay for the dog food and the insurance and the shots, but salaries, wages, that's where we're getting the creep. And if you look at our budget, that's where it is. It's all in salaries and wages. You can try to cut on nails and staples and paper all you want. You're not going to get there. It's when you let these little things go. And I know that, I understand your sentiment that it is something that's desired in the community. I get that. But at what cost? I mean, you hear it all the time. At any cost? That's lazy. I mean, it is.
Any sensible cost.
It turns out to be any cost because anytime it's asked, we say yes.
And Mr. Murphy, the sheet you handed out tonight, the budget impact, this is a budgeted item that was accounted for in the 2018 budget. Is that pertaining to the half hour overtime?
The half hour overtime, we didn't know what the cost would be at that time, but yes, it was accounted for into the 2018 budget. I mean, an estimate of it. I'd have to double check if it was exactly this amount, but it was, we did have an estimate.
Clarence.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have to go back. This was not a community priority. This was one officer's priority. It wasn't even on the department's priority list until the officer was hired and said, "I would like to have a police dog." And then it became an issue for us. We talked about budgets when this first came up and every year, we go back to the department heads and say, "You need to cut your budget." I said when this was brought up, there's no way we're going to get it into our budget. We can't. We're already cutting our budgets just to meet current expenditures and now you want to add a police officer dog and increase expenses. It wasn't going to happen. It can't happen. Something else is going to give. So this wasn't a community priority. This was one officer that wanted it and I don't think we should be compensating him extra because he wanted a police dog and talked everyone into getting it. It might be good for the community, yeah, probably, but I don't think the community should have to pay for it.
Thank you, Mr. President. When did we give approval for this position or this to go through?
I might have the answer to that.
No, the approval has kind of come in steps, right? Initially, we approved some fundraising and then we approved, it's kind of come in stages like that.
When did we approve the fundraising, I guess? I don't remember.
Fundraising, you mean? In my notes here, it looks like, I'd have to double, it looks like February 6th is when the council had given the go-ahead for the project.
When did we pass our budget?
December of '17 finalized.
So we had already, why do we have an extra $8,000 in our budget for something that we hadn't even really had on our radar? I guess if, I mean, if the argument is we've got it in our budget, how do we have it in our budget? We didn't, are you just putting it into the lump sum, public safety overtime or?
Well, I remember, if I remember, and I stretched my memory here a little bit, but if I remember correctly, I think the discussion started back in '17. And I know when we had talked about that, we were looking at the overtime budgets and what we had for staffing. And I think we, if I remember correctly, we had put it in that account. I'm kind of texting my memory here, but I do recall that we did talk about it and it was available in the 2018 budget. Where specifically we added it into there, I don't recall offhand. Any other questions? Mr. Twetton.
I support this particular expenditure and I happen to be aware of what's happening in the area. Now, a good way that you can find out how big this thing is, by the Fargo Forum on Saturday, buy it a couple of times, you'll see the great proliferation of what's happening. And what is happening is this drug thing is coming in by the semi-load practically. And it's, you've got to think of what's happening. We're destroying lives. Is saving some lives worth it? I think it is. Now, one of the biggest tragedies that we've had with the legislature this year, the governor and the representatives and senators of the state didn't get together and pass a bill to provide means of stopping this pestilence that's covering the state. It's a serious, serious thing that's happening. And you talk to any police officer, the idea of a K-9 is to perfect the policeman making an arrest. Now, are you going to take and handicap and put these people's hands behind their back? No, we don't do it that way if we know what's going on. And I don't think we should be happy to spend this thing constantly beating it up as if it isn't a need. You get a member of your family die of drugs, you'll say, "Why didn't I do something different?" And as long as we can get a K-12, a K-9, I'm going to support it. Because I know what police work is. I see what the police are doing here. I'm driving around every day. So I have the opportunity of seeing what's happening.
Mr. Reapell.
I guess I don't see this as a bait and switch. I think more of a change order that contractors do to us all the time, that we should have a little extra built in to cover something like this. Calling it a bait and switch, not even close. Not even close.
Mr. Holstead.
I'm just curious, does anybody recall how we handled this issue previously when we had a K-9?
I kind of think it was handled the same way with the half hour compensation. It's not a training compensation. It's a care and feeding and so forth of the dog compensation.
I think it said training in the MOU, but...
Training is not really on duty or possible if not to create overtime.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Parkshavinsky.
This has obviously got public support, support from the majority of the council. I voted against it because I said during tight budgets, we shouldn't be increasing our mission. Now, I told the chief after it was approved that I would support doing it right afterwards because that's the wishes of the council majority and I believe in the process. I am disappointed that this cost has come up when we were told that it wouldn't. And I don't know if bait and switch is the right term, but we were told it wasn't going to cost us anything and now it is. I'm going to vote for it because it does have popular support, but I am disappointed that it was sold under somewhat false pretenses. And I warned when I voted, no, that we don't, we are straining under increasing property taxes and less support from the state. And unless something changes, we shouldn't be adding admission. But as I said, I'm going to support this, but history is what it is and it happened. So.
Steve Allen.
I would like to offer my sincere apologies to the council because I did not include this in my initial RCA. That was an oversight and a mistake on my part. There was absolutely no ill intent. There was absolutely no intent to do any bait and switch. As you all may recall, we began our fundraising with council approval and it wasn't that long after that that the opportunity for us to attend the training through McDonough Training in Anoka came up where he actually gave us a $2,000 scholarship, so to speak, grant to help offset some of those costs. That is what required us to come forward to you quicker in the trying to do things faster than we had initially intended. This was an oversight on my part and I fully admit that. And I give you my sincere apologies, but there was absolutely no intent. I do know we discussed it in council, but it was not ever part of my RCA's, so that's my fault.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Any other comments?
I got to say one more thing, just to how this started. You know, not all good ideas come from the top down. Some of the best ideas come from right in the trenches, right where the action is, right where the rubber meets the road. Way back in the day when we used to make automobiles and nobody could stop the assembly line and workers were stressed out and quality suffered. And then suddenly we put a place on the bottom floor of the assembly line, you could stop. You could stop the whole process and say, you know what? We need to do it differently. We need to do it better. So if we have one officer who steps up and says, "A K-9 officer is going to help us reach our cause, serve our constituents, serve our community better," you know what? That's a great place for it to start. And it's a tribute also to the chief who listens from the bottom to the top and all the way through and says, you know what? We'll take good ideas wherever they come. So I can't say from where this started that it loses any credibility at all. In fact, that's the most credible place for something like this to start.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? We'll move it on to next week. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sergeant Shrag and I have to attend a meeting in St. Paul tomorrow, so we'll be left to Mr. Reston again.
Thank you, sir. Number two, update on Up North Special Event. Justin, if you want to come up here.
I'm starting to feel like an honorary member around here.
I thought you... Were two seats open.
Passes around if you guys want to sit in that way.
Can I have them all?
Sure. I don't know if those are worth anything. I think this maybe got a little bit more convoluted than what's initially on there. Okay, yeah. So basically, I guess, just kind of providing you with a little bit of update on where we're at. Everything is actually moving along really smoothly. Ticket sales started. Looking at the marketing campaign here soon. I guess just checking on the update of the road closures and whatnot is going to be kind of the main area of concern if there's any updates on that at all. But other than that, on our end, we seem to have everything moving in the right direction. I know that initially we had talked about possibly using the Civic Center as a contingency for rain strictly because, you know, with the gravel lot, if it does rain, chances are we're going to get washed out because it won't have enough time to dry. But realistically, I don't think it's a huge area of concern, but we did want to elaborate on that too because we've had some conversations about the partnership between us and HB and we had some ideas that we wanted to pitch to you guys as well. So the first thing I guess I will start with, and I wanted to ask, I'd seen in the past, you know, we had Catfish Days and whatnot, banners that were put on the Sorley Bridge, kind of on our side. And I know that Justin Marrow over at Speedy Sign said that he's made a couple of them in the past and have the dimensions. And we worked one up, wondering if there's, what we would have to do to potentially get that put up. Obviously, we would pay for the banner and all that, but just obviously another way to advertise the event as people are dogs in the river. Justin mocked that up actually this morning, so just so you can see a visual.
I'm going to go through you maybe.
Actually...
Actually, that's the DOT, I think, isn't it? If it goes on the bridge.
The water and light department would be there.
Install them. Yep. So we'd have to get an okay from the DOT and then see what water and light would need to do with. That's my suggestion. Has anyone talked to the DOT in regards to the closure of 4th Street?
They filed a form. They have changed. The civic center, everything else, we have to file. And I worked with Justin about a map. I'm going to sign off.
Right now, everything's going good? Everything's being put together?
Yep. I think we're good. The one thing we did want to bring up is, is obviously with this whole thing, everything, I guess, from the restaurant to all this event and whatnot, our goal's always been to just create more things in East Grand Forks, you know. Now with the opportunity to partner with Jamie and Tricia over at HB, we're kind of on the same wavelength of thinking on this and looking to just expand on some of these different ideas and events that we can do to kind of just enhance, you know, enhance the leisure opportunities in Grand Forks. And the one thing I told them is, from the get-go, our goal was to continue to make things better on this side because of the fact that Grand Forks does have so much. So, you know, when I told them about the contingency plan in the Civic Center and the fact that there were concerts there in the eighties and whatnot, they got intrigued. And we've talked about now checking to see, you know, what we could do even as far as a partnership or a percentage or a rental or what it might be. We have a vision of, you know, maybe like two concerts in the spring after the ice is off. Mid-level concerts like they would do at Blue Stem at the Fargo Civic Center, just kind of filling a void that we don't currently have in Grand Forks. You know, the Chester Fritz every now and then has a mid-level concert that is available. But we thought that, you know, I know so many people that go elsewhere, Minnoma, Fargo, Minneapolis for different shows, that if we have a venue and we have an opportunity to capture that audience, especially driving them further over this way rather than just, you know, a couple of blocks in, I think it'd be pretty nice all around. Granted, you know, I'm pitching it as an idea for us, but just, I think if there's a way that it could make sense for the city since it's a city-owned building.
Do you have any questions?
I have one question. Concerning the road closures, I'd be more comfortable with 4th Street and 3rd Avenue, that intersection remaining open. So if they're coming up 4th Avenue, they could still make a right onto 3rd and go around the block rather than having to, that block before having to turn off 4th. People might still come down there and then it's all blocked off and now they're going to make a U-turn to get around there.
I thought the same thing. I was just, my one thought was if anybody was going to bring up the concern of accident possibilities because of the fact that there will be no through traffic instead of it just being known that that's stopped. So, I mean, we could put entrances wherever, so that's not an issue.
And I would just leave it up with visiting with our police chief and between the two, you will work out whatever's the best and rely on his.
I would assume too, Megan, that when you do a road closure, they're probably going to want to see some type of traffic control plant. So we may need to consider that too. And that's something we can help with it maybe?
I guess the last thing, like I said, this is going to get a little convoluted. We were approached by Layden Broadcasting, who I have been told approached you guys as well. I think it's a good idea. I like the fact that they want to, you know, partner with us on it, but they have an idea to do a much larger craft beer tour. They do one at the River, whatever center it's called in St. Cloud, Good Size Center, like 100 breweries and whatnot, but they want to theme it around Oktoberfest. So I guess from the standpoint of what I just talked about, I mean, it's one more event that we can capture in East Grand Forks or other Grand Forks. So I just want to put that out there that they're hoping to do something on the footprint that we're doing Rockin' Up North. I told them, you know, in my estimations that possibly a road closure wouldn't be possible because it's getting into harvest season. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. If it is possible, great. But if not, you know, if we could just use the parking lot and then maybe even 3rd instead of blocking out 4th. But October 6th is the date that they're eyeing. So we would, I think we have five events that we can use under our off-site caterer's license. So this would still fall within that. It'd just be working on all the details.
I'd respond to that. They reached out to us last year and as you remember, they had their Grand Toberfest, right? Same group?
Mm-hmm.
And there was a little signing of a proclamation and speaking it by Mayor Brown and myself. And what they laid out and their history of having done similar kinds of things in other communities, I think they're credible. I think they're able to do it. And if they have some local groups also that will help take it up, it could grow year by year. That wouldn't look like it could have some teeth.
Yep.
And it would then be a theme that the whole downtown could operate out of.
Right.
Right? If the month of October is set aside for traditional kind of activities like that.
Right.
Then it's a theme that could carry even to other venues, you know, other restaurants and whatnot for that month.
And I've always, I mean, to be honest with you, my vision even for Rockin' Up North was eventually moving everything behind the fire station, hoping that it gets too big. I mean, that's, that realistically is a bigger area than they use for their events at the Fargo Dome outside. So, I mean, it'll be the perfect event. But to your point of credibility, Michael Brooks has been the contact.
Yep.
He actually just moved to Grand Forks. He was in the process of taking over the Grand Forks market from Fargo. And he was involved for the first, he said, 10 years with building up Rib Fest for Fargo.
Yeah.
So he does have a lot of credibility.
Yep.
And that was what intrigued us and kind of excited us and vice versa. He said that he liked the fact that we had the same visions that he had had all those years ago. So realistically, I think it could be something good. It's yet to be determined with any event that's a jumpstart, but...
Just for clarity on that, if I can, on the Layden Broadcasting side of it, that one was on a work session agenda probably four to six weeks ago for the Civic Center as a site for that. And it got pulled from the agenda because basically it was scheduling conflict between... conflict between Layton, the dates that they were looking at that worked for us fell on busy days in town, so they didn't want to compete with them. And then it got too late in October and conflicts with our ice schedule. So then, since that time, they've moved away. They thought the Civic Center was a really great venue for that as well, but they've moved away from it because it gets too close to ice season. We'll be putting ice in at the time they're looking at this October. Well, October 6th is the craft show, and then the very next weekend we'll start with ice install that week, so.
Anybody else have anything? I see none. Appreciate you coming in.
Keep it up. Thank you.
Move on to number three, paving of downtown parking lot. Mr. Gordy.
I was asked to put together a proposal to pave the parking lot with asphalt. I consulted with Justin and Nancy and Steve to put together this proposal. The source of the total cost, estimated cost is $93,712 and no sense. The proposed source is TIF dollars, which are usable for public improvements. And attached to this report are the engineer's cost estimate and the proposed design for the parking lot. And the recommendation is that the council direct WSN to repair plans and specifications so the proposed project can move forward. And I was told not to be concerned about a concrete parking lot and not to be concerned about the tailing-type parking lot that go with this one, which will be more durable and at less cost.
Just a simple yes or a no on this one? Is the parking lot still available for sale?
That's a council decision, but my direction from the council is no. Not for sale. Not at this time.
And the main reason, from what I understand, is we do want to direct what would go into that prominent corner. If it was going to be developed, we would want to have some direction as to how that would go.
That would mean it is for sale.
Is for the price, right?
I don't remember voting on that.
I don't either.
Did you decide what is the...
Well, yes, you did, because you told me which parcels were to be included on the list of parcels to be available versus the parcels that were not to be made available. And this was removed from the list of parcels that were to be made available. So yes, this is direction from the council.
So even if we had an offer, a big offer, we couldn't entertain it now because we voted no. We're not, it's not...
You'd have to reverse your decision, yes.
We can do that. So we'll put $100,000 into a parking lot, and then we might change our mind down the road and try to sell it. I don't think we're going to get $140,000 out of it.
My concern in the road we're on is, since the flood and we took out, I think, was it Emerson Music that was on that corner? It's been 20 years of gravel, and we're just hanging out saying, maybe yes, maybe no. And 20 years of gravel does not look good, and there's no other gravel parking lot in our downtown. All hard surface, you know, if we want to even conform to our own ordinance of developing a downtown parcel, it has to be hard surface striped. And there we sit with a gravel lot. And nowhere else do we offer gravel parking anywhere in our whole downtown area. And so, just to bring it all into the same context, and the beauty of asphalt is, it is easy to pick up a portion of it. You know, the building wouldn't necessarily cover that whole development. It would be a portion of it, it's pretty easy to pick that up versus concrete. And it may not be for 10 or 15 or 20 years from now.
The other thing to remember is that any building that is built could ultimately be removed. So what, by taking that logic, you'd never want to build a building because something else could replace it. So that would be the cost of removing it, and I'm not sure that, you know, I'm not sure that we should say something potential in the future should stop us from looking at what we need to have to meet needs as they are today. We just have to recognize there may be a cost involved.
I, you know, when we talked about this numerous times about that quarter, we've had numerous people come forth, and we've always said, "No, we're not going to do this." I think looking at this and doing asphalt is the right thing to do. It's going to have the downtown parking lot, instead of being gravel, it's going to be paved. It's going to not have the issue of us having to go into there and level it off, fix the holes. I think this way, we could have a parking spot that can be striped and we can have, it look like a nice parking lot, and so the way it's been looking. So, Henry.
I think all you have to do is go down there Friday night, and the whole downtown is packed. It's obviously we need the parking. I'm for hard surface. There's no use in bringing a lot of mud out in the street for Jason Stordahl will be picking up. We can scrape the snow off, clean out downtown like they're doing, we're open for business. And the thing is, you go kitty-corner over the Old Hams Building, the usage might change. I've seen it change many times in my lifetime. So I'm 100% for having a city parking lot there and put some surface on it. And it's much easier to maintain. Some of you people stay out, don't stay out very late. Why, you better kick with it and come down there about 8 o'clock and see what's going on. And you know the interesting thing? You go to the vets and there's a walleye feed, and there's people there almost as old as me, so you're taking care of the seniors. And I think most people want to do that. The place is packed.
Thanks. Thank you.
First off, the Civic Center has a gravel parking lot.
Sort of.
If we decided to go with this, I'm not sure if garbage dumpsters are in the best spot, and I would visit with Jason's crew to see if he's going to be able to make that swing in there with that island right across.
Yeah, Jason did make me aware that that conceptual layout may not totally work with his garbage trucks, so yeah, that's something we'd have to review.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Mr. Verz.
I guess I'd take a little bit of a... I'd take the exception to the fact that that says that we are open for business, but we're clearly not. We've had multiple looks, concepts, offers at those locations, and we are not going to. So I guess do whatever you want to do with the parking lot because we are not open for business. Grand Forks is going through parking lots right now. If you want to compare our parking to Grand Forks' parking, we are like, we're like Oz, you know? I mean, and their development plan is, let's build. Their businesses realize that parking problem is a perceived problem, it's not an actual problem, and that we are doing nothing but being overly protectionist with our own business here to the detriment of those same businesses. The best we can do is develop our downtown. And I would say that till we actually get it done, but we used to. We had a strategy of building our downtown, and we started doing that. We invested a lot of money in doing that. And then all of a sudden, we got things in, and then we get some pushback from the people that were beneficiaries of all that good fortune of us investing tons of money into it, saying, "Wait a second, we're in, let's bar the door, let's not let anybody else in." And I just think it's a short-sighted look at development. You don't have to look any further than go across the river to see what people want to do, want to invest in communities in downtowns right now. And like I said, this council, for the most part, doesn't want to do anything there. So I guess I'll admit defeat, and we're going to have all the free parking in the world.
Mr. President, I thought about this a lot, I guess, that last meeting that I came to, and I understood, I think I, myself, in speaking, got a little personally heated in my responses to Mr. Repel and Mr. DeWerson. To be honest, I completely understand where you guys are all coming from on this. I do. I mean, I get it. But the one thing you got to look at too, Mark, is I understand with what you're saying with Grand Forks Downtown, but it's completely different. You talk about the majority of those businesses, the business that they are making their money off of is nighttime young business. They're not overly, you know, when you're talking about those places are packed, it's 9:00 on. Those kids don't care. And unfortunately, the clientele, the Blue Mo's, the clientele that we have, the VFW, a lot of the businesses that make up what we need, it's not that 21, 22, 23-year-old foot.
They're putting the market price, they're putting the Hugo's there, they're putting things that aren't that.
They put up a lot of...
I'm just saying, I mean, it's not just that. It's about building a community.
Right.
It's building a close area that people want to be and stay in.
Right.
So it doesn't just have to be the 9 at midnight or whatever.
But at the same time, your exact comment of, you know, we got this plethora of parking, that's also a huge benefit. I mean, that's a selling point for attracting business. But looking at the same token, look right down to Merz. There's three, four empty retail spaces just sitting, and that was the case before we moved into that building. I don't think looking at and saying that, you know, we need to keep developing something that's not there is the best aspect either. Selling the point that, hey, we got ample parking, it's phenomenal, come bring your business here because you don't have to worry.
And I hope you take this the right way. I think I believe in you more than you do. I think that it's the quality of your business that should drive people. And I believe that you guys and East Grand Forks businesses are far superior than anywhere in the region. It doesn't, we don't need to give them free parking for them to want to come. I don't, I don't. I think that we've got the best restaurants and bars and all those type of businesses, shoe places, I mean, movie theaters. I think we've got, we've got it. We shouldn't have, when you have the quality, don't build on it. Don't sell yourself, show it.
Absolutely. The only thing is, though, I mean, you could come spend the day with us, and we could show you that I get what you're saying, but it's not all that meets the eye even. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes things. And unfortunately, in our shoes, we know that it's a huge asset, to be honest with you, and it's unfortunate, but it realistically is. You know, if we were to put a space up in Grand Forks instead of here, I'd probably be with you in saying that it doesn't matter. But unfortunately, that's just not the case for us. And honestly, if you came and hung over this for a while, I bet you I could show you, you could change your mind a little bit on that because I get where you're coming from, but also you don't see everything that we get to see on our side, so that's all I'll say.
Henry. How many employees do you have part-time and full-time?
A total of about 40, I think.
I can tell you this, I know that younger people just love up north. It's very important. You know, in the business world, they take and give people hundreds of thousands of dollars all over the state to get something in. There's a substantial business, one of the best ones in East Grand Forks or Grand Forks. We're known for excellent parking. Are we going to be shabby now? I don't think we should be. Image is important and appearance. So it affects lots of people.
Henry.
I enjoy going in there myself, and...
You fit their demographic.
You betcha. I'm not chaperoning either.
Anybody else have any comments at this time?
I do.
Mr. Repel.
I'm not against the parking issue. What I'm against is that if we would approve this, pursuant to it, we also add the fact that maybe it's time these businesses start helping us out, that they can pay for the snow removal, they can pay for the cleaning of the lots. We do it for the businesses that they can help us back. It's a great thing they got the parking, we agree with that, but someday we got to replace those lots, and I think it's time maybe we get some help.
Who, from a staff standpoint, would start to build that fee schedule? You know, based on benefit, based on square footage, based on numbers of patrons? Who would start to build that fee schedule that could allocate to each individual business?
We'd have to have a bunch of them do it because I think Jason would be able, would have to have the cost for what it costs for us to do the cleaning and the snow removal. And I don't know, maybe Nancy, you might have to get involved in that, too.
We already have all that information.
Okay.
We did a parking study a number of years ago, we know how many spots there are. We have all the information from Grand Forks on what they charge.
I think there's a legal issue here, too.
Have a thought on how you'd allocate it to individual businesses?
They do, there's a use base over in Grand Forks, so we could just follow a long suit to how they charge for their parking downtown. Mark Olsted looked into that a number of different years ago, so we do have all that information available, so.
Could that be on a work session just for conversation? You know, for all of us to start to get our head around what that looks like?
Yeah.
It's not an absorbent amount. I can tell you the number of spots I have...
And I can tell you, Mr. Repel, that talking with some of the businesses, they are okay with that.
Right. It's just, we've been putting it on the back burner for years. This is a prime time to get into it.
That was my thought as well. As soon as you said it, I was going to be one of those last little tidbits.
Sure.
Yep.
Mr. Potchaminski.
I've talked with some of the businesses also. I think you'd have a problem with getting all of the businesses on board. I guess my question is, is if we did come to some sort of agreement and went forward, how was that fee collected? Is it a utility bill? Is it the property tax statement?
That's where we kind of ran into the problem because in Grand Forks, they have a downtown business association, and so they have a way of collection for doing that. Right now, we don't have a formal group of downtown businesses.
It actually comes under the downtown parking assessment on my form.
Yep. Yeah, so there's a number of different...
I can show it to you. It goes right to the city.
Yes, it does.
They administer it.
It comes out of a separate group.
There's a department there that administers it.
So is it on your, what, utility bill or is it on your...
Comes on its own separate bill every quarter, whether I like it or don't, I get it.
Is it fixed per quarter or is it...
It'll, it varies, it's fixed per quarter, but it'll increase, it's been increasing every year.
It doesn't like go up in the winter and down in summer?
Nope, nope. It's a set rate. They just take your total and divide it by four, and that's your quarterly rate.
Yep, and the rate is set based on the number of spaces they figure your business would...
Spaces and size, size of your office.
Spaces and size of your office, and then what they do is based on what their estimates are for snow removal, cleaning, those types of things. That's where they get the per-space charge and then, so.
I'd just like to make one more comment. The parking lot in the library is full at night, too, so it shows you that we've got utilization of everything that's available downtown. Plus, you strengthen that whole block where the VFW is.
Anybody else have anything? If not, we'll move it on.
I just tell Mr. Gordy that you can probably put a grand study away, I guess, parking is East Grand Forks' brand, so we'll have to look any further.
You'll get right on that, right?
Do what Mark says. Consideration for bids for 18 CP2 master lift station rehabilitation. Mr. Emery.
So we open bids last Tuesday, again, for your master lift station rehab. If you remember, we're basically doing this project because inside the lift station, the wet well had pretty severe deterioration of the concrete walls there due to hydrogen sulfide gases. So basically, we bid the project, let me back up. We did receive two bids. We had Northern Plains Contracting out of Wolverton, Minnesota, and ICS Incorporated out of Grand Forks. We did have basically a base bid, and then we had an alternate number one and alternate number two. Alternate number one was to replace the existing 18-inch magnetic flow meter. In order to be able to do that and even be able to bypass the lift station, we do have to put in a, basically a 30-by-12 tapping tee, to, again, to be able to bypass the lift station while we replace that meter. And then our alternate number two was for basically an add or a deduct for an alternate coating system inside that wet well. The base bid, we base bid basically a Raven coating system, which is an epoxy coating system. The alternate number two was a coating system called Zebra, which is a polyurethane, so a little different product, so we weren't really necessarily bidding. so, little different products, so we weren't really necessarily bidding apples to apples, um, so we couldn't bid them, you know, totally against each other, but we did, um, you know, get a price so we could kind of have some options. Um, so I did, um, kind of lay out what the budget would be with, you know, if we were to award just the base bid plus the alternate, um, or if we were to basically award the base bid plus the alternate, um, plus the alternate number two, which did come in, um, that alternate coating system did come in as a deduct, so if that was awarded, um, in the case of Northern Plains Contracting, it would be about a fifty thousand dollar deduct, so. So I kind of laid out the budget for those two options. Um, at this present time, we are kind of checking references, doing a little more research, um, especially on the alternate coating system. I mean, fifty thousand dollars, no doubt, is a lot of money, but same token with the price of this entire project, you know, we want to make sure, too, that we're going to have a system that's going to last and, you know, provide that protection for years to come. So, really, at this time, I'm hoping this week, we can kind of check our references and everything, and then what I would do is come back with a recommendation at next week's council meeting. So, I guess for that, I can answer, you know, at this point, any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? I see none, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number five, request for playground equipment at Griggs Trailhead, Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and Dave Andrew is here from representing Sacred Heart as well, if we have any questions for him. Um, so, in, in the expansion of Sacred Heart Schools, they've come forward with the request to, um, be allowed to build or install playground equipment at the Griggs Trailhead site. Uh, so, I have, uh, done a little bit of the background work on checking utilities and easements in that area, um, and it is, there are a couple of locations, there's a map included in your packet, inside those black square boxes, we're pretty safe within that area, that there are no utilities, um, running, so there's nothing, from that perspective, really stopping us from being able to install some playground equipment. Uh, the only caveat to that is, it is within the Corps of Engineers building project easement. Uh, we have a, an email, uh, verification from them that they'd be okay with us building for this purpose. Uh, it's just, we would want, if we move forward with an agreement, we'll want to get a, a formal written, um, response from the Corps that says that they're okay with it, just to, to follow through from the email that we got from Dana Warner with the Corps. Uh, so it, from a utility perspective, uh, from a Corps perspective, there isn't anything stopping us from putting playground equipment there. Um, so the last thing that I have is just, there's a, there's an attachment that includes a, kind of an idea of what Sacred Heart would like to see. Uh, it's a couple of swing bays and a, a climbing feature, um, as described, there's one example in the packet for you to look at. Uh, and really, the use for, from their perspective would be for their, uh, young elementary school, they're kind of the age five to twelve would be the design of it, the size of the playset, um, and certainly it'd be used by them during their school hours for recess with that group, and they'd have their teachers, you know, escorting the students to and from, recognizing that there's, that the railroad tracks is an obstacle there. So, um, if we would move forward with an agreement, I did reach out to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust to see what, if they had any examples of others that have happened like this. Uh, Dave suggested, prior to the meeting tonight, that once the equipment was built, that they would most likely look to, uh, just turn over ownership, they had managed the building of it, and certainly the purchase of the equipment, and then turn ownership over to the city, so the city would own the equipment, of course, on the city's property. And we'd want, want to probably foot, put forth a lease agreement, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking something similar to the way that we lease, uh, the Civic Center and the use of our arenas to senior high for their hockey activities, FAD classes, and so on, something similar to that. Um, there's a couple bullet points that the league suggested, of course, the, the million-dollar per occurrence general liability insurance, listing the city as additionally insured on the school's liability insurance, and then the school agreeing to defend and indemnify the city for claims arising from the use of the playground, unless, of course, due to the city's negligence, um, and for claims resulting from the school's breach of the agreement. So, just wanted to bring this forward to you. I have not had Ron or anyone with the league start drafting an agreement, uh, thought I'd bring it forward to you here first, kind of get your thoughts, should we move forward with an agreement to bring to the next work session. I have not talked real clearly with Dave on timing, I'm sure they want to start install as soon as possible to be ready for the next school year. He's nodding to that, so I would, I would say that would be the case with that. Any thoughts or questions?
Mr. Gostin.
Well, I guess, um, my standpoint is, uh, is that I think that we are, by doing this, um, establishing kind of a dangerous precedence that we're using a public park for a private entity. Um, I have done some research on it, it's not that it's out of the question that a person from the, or the city council couldn't allow it, however, you are opening up yourself for tort liability, public safety, you know, issues, uh, where, you know, some of those things can be dealt with, with a lease agreement. However, it also would, it's a public park, it's considered a public, you know, a public playground, public trailhead, and though, I believe Sacred Heart has indicated that, you know, anybody could potentially use this equipment, what you're doing is you're, you're really deterring the public from utilizing that equipment during public time by allowing, you know, basically having kids in classes and, and those things in it, and turning a, a, a public park into a, into almost a private, uh, playground. You know, we may be better off if, if we don't believe that we need to have that space for private purposes, or, you know, for the public as opposed to private, why don't we just subdivide it and sell them a chunk of it, and they can utilize it as their own land? You know, that might be a better alternative to it. I do know, um, that, uh, those are the concerns that I've, that I've researched on these types of things. The other thing of it is, is, and I know it's not a popular, you know, opinion, is that you're setting a precedent that, that some other peripheral group that may not be quite as, uh, uh, you know, normal as we want to consider as Sacred Heart, come in and ask to do the same thing, and now we've, uh, set a, a precedence that, that is going to be very difficult and not impossible to say, no, we're not going to give you the other part, you know, the other side of the park to set up your private, so to speak, uh, playground. So, those are the concerns that I have, um, when it comes to utilizing this for a, a private entity, and I'm, and I haven't even, you know, I'm not even saying that's a private religious entity, we're just saying a, a, a private entity for a public, for a public park or a public trailhead, so. That's, that's my concern.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. In a legal regard, is there any difference between, say, a hockey arena and a park? I mean, both are public facilities, correct?
Depends upon what you're asking me.
I mean, they're both public facilities, right? So, we allow the Barons Tournament to lease out space, we allow the Blue Line Club space in our concession stands, we allow, we allow this all the time, and I get it, I, I think we have to protect ourselves from allowing too much public partner type of things, but the reason why you have city councils is to be the, to discriminating factor or judge on what you allow in and out of cities, and I think that you do have some, some ability to discriminate between different goals, as long as they fit with the goal and the, and the, um, objectives of the city. Like I said, I, we do this, I already believe we do this, um, partially because it's a temporary agreement, um, I guess, I, I don't really see.
Do we know that it's a temporary agreement?
Isn't that what's, he just talked about it being turned over, I mean, putting the facility in and then turning it over as a part-time lease, right, or?
No, I, I guess, I don't understand it as a temporary agreement. I, what they would do is they would, they would, of course, fund the equipment and, and hire the company, whoever they choose to go with to build it, but, and then, once it's installed, the equipment would become owned by the city. But the lease agreement would be for continued use.
Like I said, I mean, like when the Blue Line Club bought all the kitchen equipment for the stuff, it's, isn't it the city's property now? I mean, are, we allow them operation because it's for the benefit of the city? We think it helps our youth programs, we think it helps these things. So, I guess, that's my take on it, I, I think.
It turns my feet, too, to use that stuff, right?
And the other thing of it is, is a building is typically something that you lease out, you know, opening, you know, a public park isn't something that you typically lease out to a, a separate entity to utilize for that purpose, so.
Is the golf course a park?
Well, the golf course is a.
Golf course? We, that's a big, it's an outdoor thing, it's a park-like city.
I think it's located in a park zone, but.
Figure it out, figure it out.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, whether it's a popular opinion or not is not what I'm saying, I'm just giving you my opinion on, on the issues that you can raise, uh, end up running into.
And I guess, my, the second part of my comment was, I think if we were entering into a lease agreement with this group, I think we should, I think I've talked to you about it, at the same time, in a separate agreement, we should, we should nail down what the long-term maintenance agreements are on the other side of the dike and for the, um, for the, um, restrooms or the trailhead and stuff like that, that's been, kind of been a gentleman's agreement, for lack of a better term, for a long time. Like I said, not to combine the two, but since you have the same people in the same room, it should be something that is done at the same time.
And I had the same opinion back then.
Henry.
I strongly support it, we've been, they've been using it for years, and one thing that we've got to remember is, we're developing children all the way through our old city. We, uh, we went through this in the cemetery years ago because it was owned by the public. I, I don't hesitate one bit in supporting it, and if somebody else wants to go down there, and, uh, let's, uh, let's ask them, uh, how about, uh, how about the Strauss Park up there, everybody uses it. So, uh, we've got, uh, we, we've let them use it for years, and I think we should continue. We've got plenty of land around here.
Dave?
If I might say, we're not necessarily looking for an exclusive.
Do you want to come up to the mic first, please? Make sure it's on.
Push it.
Because we want to work you over.
Okay. We're, we're not necessarily looking for an exclusive use, we're, it's a temporary.
Thank you.
We're looking at, uh, while construction is going on, we have to take our current playground out, and so where the kids can play for a year is very limited, and we're not looking at necessarily, as you can see, buy an extensive type of thing or high maintenance, and we thought we would put this in, and it would benefit the city in the long term. We're not looking for an excuse, exclusive type of situation where our kids can only use it from such and such and such and such, we're not putting a fence around it, it would just be used for anybody. And after we're, our construction is done and our new playground is put in, that stuff would just stay. Uh, now, if our kids go down to Sherlock and use that playground or any other playground, it's just a common city playground, I guess, is how I see it. Um, we're willing to work in regard to whatever, if you want to talk about a lease or something like that, but we're not necessarily looking at this being, this is ours and only us can touch it. I think it would benefit, you look at the O'Leary Trailhead, there's playground equipment there. Um, so, I don't know the difference as far as, we're just saying, we want to put some stuff there for the kids to use for a year.
I guess on that point, is, is the lease agreement necessary? I mean, is it, couldn't this be looked at as a donation and, you know, and just call it a donation and then it's the city's property and it's acts as any city park? I mean, I know when I was a kid, we used to march down to Griggs Park and use, use their Griggs Park stuff or whatever, you know, I don't, I mean.
And I will say that my original, when, in the original discussions that I've had, is they were, I was always told they're removing the playground where it is now, they're going to be utilizing this one, and there was no plan that I've ever been told that you're going to be building another playground somewhere when this, when this one-year construction period is, has been, uh, completed.
And I'll, I'll add, that's new to me, too, I wasn't aware of that, I was thinking this was a permanent, going to be used forever.
The, this, this new stuff at the trailhead, yes, is, would be permanent, and we would not take it out, but the discussions in regard to the playground have been very fluid in regard to where to put equipment and what could we save, and we're finding out that the, the current playground equipment, you can't save very well from a liability standpoint. So it's better to put new stuff, so the construction company has to use that space, so they're taking that out, and obviously, you don't want kids playing in a construction zone. So, this is kind of a temporary, one-year type of, uh, process, and we thought it would benefit us and benefit the city in the long term.
After that year, you're building on the old location?
Right.
And be your own then? Okay, that makes sense.
Mayor Gander, do you have something?
Yeah, um, I've been out on the trails quite a bit, and Sherlock Trailhead gets used a good bit, and other than that, and Reed, I've lamented to you, I bet you, I bet you it's three percent utilization of the trailheads, including Griggs, including the VFW, including the one on Twelfth, and then Eagles Point gets maybe five or ten percent utilization. If we can get more and more activity, more and more traffic, you know, it's a lifestyle, get out and enjoy nature, get out and move your body, work the big muscles and all of that, and so, as I think of one more connection into that trailhead and one more reason for people to go there, I just think it's a great thing. And if, if it turns out to be a little more of a long-term thing, if you guys become kind of landlocked because of some expansion that you're doing, what, you guys are going over the dike to your ball diamonds and stuff anyway, so I think it's just great.
Anybody else have anything on this?
And just, does, does Sacred Heart currently, they pay or do they do the maintenance on, for the trailhead, currently?
The, the trailhead, they open it and do the daily maintenance on it, if it's a, 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 a building maintenance that needs, something needs to be fixed, the city does that, but cleanliness, daily opening, closing, cleanliness, Sacred Heart does that on that trailhead, and I believe that's kind of a gentleman's agreement.
That's part of, like I said, trying to codify that agreement so that everybody's protected and everybody knows where everybody stands or what their responsibilities are.
And I'm not sure, but I drafted, at the council's request, a document regarding the, we'll say, the baseball diamond and the temporary, uh, football field. I'd have to double-check and see if anybody ever signed off on it, but it was, it was drafted and, and provided.
Okay. Nothing else to move on? Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Number six, request for Green River Access Plan for Red and Red Lake Rivers, Reed.
All right, thank you again. Um, so the Red Lake River Corridor, uh, as you all are aware, the corridor group applied for last summer and received funding, uh, in the amount of about two-hundred thousand dollars for projects that were submitted for fiscal year nineteen, um, and East Grand Forks did not have any projects included in that grant application. So, the application process for fiscal year two thousand twenty is coming again, uh, quickly, and I wanted to put this in front of this group to have some discussion, um, and hopefully receive some direction from you on if there are any projects that we would like to apply for, uh, again, for fiscal year two thousand twenty. So the financial grant period for that would be July first nineteen to terminating the end of it would be June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, is when the dollars, those grant dollars would have to be spent by. Um, potential projects, uh, some of these, as you go through your packet, some are projects that other communities applied for last year, and these are copies, uh, just so you can kind of get a feel for what the projects have looked like, potential projects would be. projects would be river access, like canoe or kayak launches, uh, fishing piers along the Red Lake River, um, any parking area improvement, signage, et cetera. Um, and then of course, the one thing that I think that we could include in this, if we're looking for, those would be smaller projects, maybe in the area of $15,000 by the time you did some shore, uh, development to access the river and a kayak, uh, dock or launch something along those lines. A bigger project, um, that I think could be included in this application is the boat landing on the Red River. I, I believe, uh, even though it, because it's at the confluence of the Red Lake and the Red River, it is part, I believe, of the Red Lake River Corridor. Yeah. And I think that it could, uh, it could be included. It's certainly one that needs a lot of improvement. Um, it would be a lot. I think in the timeline, on the second page of the R C eight, the timeline for formal council approval, to have a resolution to include in the grant, we would need to have that passed by July 17th to meet the July 31st deadline. And on something big like that, I'd probably want to work with W S N to prepare some sort of cost estimate to go along with it. But, um, I do believe that would be one that could be included and certainly is one that's needed in town. So I'm just kind of looking for discussion from all of you and a little direction on where to go.
Lawrence?
Uh, one we might, that's already in the works is the trailhead connection with the Kennedy Bridge. We've got cost estimates and everything for that one already.
Yep.
So that one can be thrown in there.
Okay. And I'll have to check and see if that is, if it is eligible to be included because I believe that that's state recreational property. And if it is, it's not eligible for these dollars.
It is, Steve.
Okay. So then it wouldn't be eligible for these dollars.
Yep. It says it right here.
Isn't the, uh, land boat landing on Red River also?
The Red River Boat Landing, to my understanding, is not state property.
It's DNR property.
I think it's city property.
City property.
They, the reason why we haven't had a boat landing put there is because the last time they came, they wanted us to show that we had clear title to that property and we failed in doing it.
Red River?
The Red River.
Red River. The Red Lake River Landing is DNR property. The Red, Red River is not.
Yeah. So the Red River one, like I said, if we want to go down that route, we better make sure. And I would imagine that there's DNR funding available to, they, they passed us by five years ago, six years ago, that we were supposed to get a, a new one. But, so they've got the money. Don't tell you that we don't. But if we compare it with this and then do some other stuff. But the holdback is going to be that we need to make sure the title work is done because at the time, they couldn't, they weren't allowing us to spend, or they weren't allowing the DNR to spend money because we didn't, we couldn't prove that we had clear title to that property.
I've provided title on that property three separate times already.
I'm just telling them what they tell us.
We had it, we had it reviewed and all the information.
And I guess my small, uh, suggestions, you know, we did a, uh, LeFave Park, Red Lake River Corridor area kind of design in the, probably six years ago, seven years ago. In that design, I believe there was some, um, there's some detail for a couple of different things. One was, uh, a handicap accessible fishing pier. Um, I think it was on the Red Lake River. Like they had one that was located on the Red Lake River on the Eagles Crest Trailhead where the Red Lake River Trail or Boat Landing is where that, there's a big, like, old pump house or something back there. But this would be something that, I don't know if it was semi-permanent or permanent, um, parts of it could have been taken out. Um, I think that would be a huge benefit. Like I said, it was wheelchair accessible, um, something like that. And not any other type of fishing locations that would be, um, handicap accessible, those type of things. Um, the other, it mentions barriers. I would look creatively and seriously into looking at what is available for landscaping type barriers to stop certain traffic that we don't want to stop or get going on those types of, not only right downtown at the confluence, but we've talked about, um, areas behind like Maplewood, not stopping traffic from going back there. If there's some hauling big boulders or something like that, that would block off some of those areas, I think that would be money well spent. I think the, the neighborhood would like that and it would allow for people, well, some neighbors may like that. Um, I think that's been an issue back there, getting people traffic behind there. So there's something like that. And then, um, I know there's been some talk in that area about some type of like a natural playground or, um, that could go in LeFave Park area or on, on the, um, in the Eagles Trailhead area, kind of down the hill or something like that. Either of those type of things are not huge dollar items and you could probably project them, you know, like I said, with that plan, we've already got details or somewhat details. It would be not fairly simple because you'd be doing it, but it'd be easier to take some of those things and put a dollar amount to them and, and apply for something like that if, if we wanted to do it. Obviously there's a match, so we'd have to come up with a match. But those would be fairly simple things that would be a benefit to that Red Lake Corridor.
I think the barriers would be a good idea to look at because I know that when we had the issue with that. Glad you didn't say parking lot, but that's. But I, I think doing what, I mean, the boat landing area, you talked about that. I think those things are great. And, you know, the one, how much is the handicap accessible used on River Road up there?
Daily.
Daily?
Daily. Yeah.
That's something that's high use that'd be a good.
Okay.
And if we could pick up some of the priorities from Mr. Demers, I know you really have put a lot of time into that corridor. I mean, you, you work with the group all the way. How, how large an area does that group go that you serve on?
All the way to Red Lake.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's multi-county, multi-water, I mean, it's the whole watershed. It's many cities.
Multinational.
Multi, well, yeah, I guess, yeah.
Is that the one now that Reed sits on?
Yes. Yeah.
And I, I recommend Reed, too, because this is the type of reason why I wanted him to do this because it takes, you know, it takes staff to kind of whittle it down to this and bring it forward, you know, in this type of manner. So I think giving us these type of options and, and I think Reed, in talking to Reed, he's got some bigger plans and, and stuff that we can look at, you know, going forward and leveraging this type of money, too.
Just in general, is there any money that you could put forth just to clean up that whole area down there? I mean, because realistically, you've got the old, old trail that people kind of use as a road along the river and it's torn up. You've got, you know, potholes and mud holes and kind of grass and not grass and.
Which on LeFave?
No, I'm just talking about the downtown, you know, the, the confluence of the rivers and the, and the Red Lake. I mean, realistically, to make it look, I, I know it's on the, it floods out, but, but we just have a, a tough time getting it back into shape once the ice and the river retreats and it, it always looks a little bit rough down there.
And that's my point about, the timeframe we're looking at here is like July. So if we could look at a few things, short-term, like you said, barriers, barriers downtown, barriers out in Maplewood. I mean, to me, part of the reason, yes, we have floods, but that's not the biggest reason why that stuff is tore up. It's tore up because people are running around there in ways that they shouldn't, you know? So like I said, if we can look at this in the real short term, Reed's only been doing it for a little bit, but then in the next cycle, well, we could do some more broad, I've got some big plans for down there, so.
And I'm glad to hear that there's a development plan, you know, sitting in somebody's hip pocket, that you can just take off components of that plan. And so it becomes cohesive versus just willy-nilly. So I'm glad to hear that there is that plan and that you're bringing in those components one by one.
Anything else around that?
For me, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Request to approve transit route change. Ms. Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, um, I'd ask if maybe we could, uh, switch agenda items and move eight up and flip it with seven since we have Mr. Larson here from Tri County. Um, he's been very patient, so I figured maybe we'd, uh,
Sure.
Quickly go through this. Um, I'm going to open up my agenda item here. So, uh, we brought, uh, forth a request from, uh, Tri County Corrections to rent the space that the Housing Department was in, um, the first floor. And in May, we were asked to kind of review our office space now and possibly relocating offices, combining them, um, to see if we could maybe open up more space. Uh, so I sat down with the city administrator and at this point in time, with the storage needs that we need, um, for maintaining documents and, um, keeping those types of things as well as, uh, space, uh, for maybe not full-time employees, but employees that are part-time and/or in and out of the facility, uh, we just didn't feel that, um, it would be beneficial for us at this time. It would require some construction, um, a lot of movement, um, finding other storage space. And so at, at this point in time, we did feel that we'd bring it back because I know Tri County is kind of, um, well, wanting to, uh, figure out space sooner rather than later. Um, the second, uh, item that was discussed at that May meeting was if in fact we were to rent to them, would we, um, be able to provide security cameras or some type of camera system so that we can monitor, um, what's going in and out of the facility? And I do have a city hall camera system proposal that I received from the I T department and I can pass that around. Um, one of the things when we started discussing it was, uh, truly it would be nice to have cameras throughout city hall rather than just in front of their office because we do have a lot of public that enters in and out, uh, not just Tri County. And so this would provide us a camera system for us to view off-site weekends, holidays, those types of things, just to monitor the building, which would be a, a good move for us as a whole. Um, because it was a quick estimate put together by I T, um, I told them to estimate high just to verify that, you know, it wouldn't come in above this. And we're looking at about $9,400. And that's to camera, the whole building, the work to put it up, the miscellaneous supplies, and then the server was the large, um, cost. So, um, how you would want to see, um, that in terms of, I think we could find some, uh, spa, or budgetary, um, line item for that through either maintenance or some of our equipment. Um, again, that would be something that I would think you'd want to negotiate with Tri Valley to at least at a minimum, maybe pay for their wing or a portion of the fee. And then, um, again, just to go over that they had, uh, offered to pay $10 per square foot. So that amounts to around $10,230 per year. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Larson or of me or of the city administrator?
I appreciate you bringing forth the camera proposal. That was one thing I brought up and just wanted to see what it costs to do this. You know, it's maybe it's something that we should have looked at anyway, being a city building and having a lot of traffic in here daily, um, just for safety reasons. Um, but I appreciate that. And I don't have any, Mr. Demers?
I guess, I just wanted to make sure that the, the comments I made when this first came up weren't misconstrued to seem like that I was asking for a hold until we looked at our spacing. I was, I thought I had made it clear that I was ready to move forward, get these guys in here before, without, I just think, same thing as what I'm talking about with Sacred Heart. At the same time we're talking about this, we should also be looking at these other issues that we know we have. I guess, I, I apologize if it seemed like I was saying, no, we have to reconfigure our, our city hall to get these guys in here. That wasn't my point. My point was, this, as we're looking at changes, we should be doing some long-term planning about how we're going to configure our building to maximize for their needs in the future. Hopefully, I'd like them to expand, you know, and how do we, how do we do that? How do we accommodate that? And I just, that was my intent. So I apologize if I was unclear, uh, and I didn't mean to hold it for, for that reason. I, I thought that we could do both at the same time. So I apologize.
Yeah.
So we'll move this forward then to council next Tuesday.
Thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you for your patience.
Not a problem.
Back to number seven, transit rope changes.
This is a process that, um, the M P O and Cities Area Transit, as well as myself, have been, um, going through for the last year and a half. It always starts with a transit development plan. And, uh, Ms. Kova is here to explain, uh, the transit development plan if you have any questions. But, um, through that process of a year, we determined that, um, right now our ridership is going down. Um, there's a number of different reasons for that. One is just, uh, when gas prices go down, we notice less people ride the bus. But the other two things that were brought up were that the reliability of the current system was, um, not there. They were, um, because the routes were so long and covered such large areas that we weren't meeting our, our stop times. And so if the bus didn't stop at the right time, then they weren't getting on their transfer, therefore they weren't getting to where they needed to be, or they were missing, um, their appointments and/or work shifts. So they were finding other avenues of getting around. The second thing was, is with East Grand Forks residents, was that they were riding the buses for very long periods of time. And so for them to get from one location out to the mall, it was taking almost an hour or two to three hours because we were having gaps in our system of where we just weren't getting there. So therefore, um, we took the transit development plan. I've been working with MINDOT and, uh, last year we received funds for this new expansion to get started and moving forward, um, and then continuing on. So, uh, the three things that the new route changes will do, and, um, they ran a very lovely article in the paper today in the Grand Forks Herald. And that's, one is more direct routes and two is that we'll have a more centralized traffic, uh, transfer center now. Um, most of the East Grand Forks buses will go to the Grand Cities Mall. We're working with Hope Church there. They're looking to make that kind of, um, a central destination for Grand Forks because that truly is more of the center part of Grand Forks, East Grand Forks now, rather than the transit center in downtown. Um, so that was one in that we've got way more buses during our peak times. So during our peak times, for example, at Sunshine Terrace or Hugo's, um, they can, there's three buses running an hour. And our new service, if you get on at Hugo's, you can get to Ultra within 20 to 25 minutes and that doesn't require a transfer. So, um, we're starting to have our routes in East Grand Forks kind of be more of a centralized route. It's going from the north end of East Grand Forks, traveling to the center of, excuse me, north end of East Grand Forks, traveling to the center of Grand Forks and/or the mall. So we have those two routes. We will still continue to run a route that runs just within East Grand Forks. That will just run during our peak times, morning hours, evening hours, and then they can get on and transfer at Hugo's to one of the more major routes that will now connect between Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. Um, we've added three new buses. The state was able to pay for one of those large buses at, uh, $474,000. Um, so that was a generous offer by the state of Minnesota. And we're still working continually to get them to expand, um, their commitment to our operational services, um, in terms of funding. Right now it's an 80/20, um, maximum. Um, we still continue to work with the state to extend that, to find innovative ways of helping us fund because, um, when you have mandates of things such as, is we're requiring more hours, we're requiring more service, um, it's hard for the city to pick up that local share with the required mandate, as you're aware of. So, um, the last thing that is. So, the last thing that is very new to the system will be a night service in East Grand Forks. That's something that we've lacked. It's something that's been requested, and we're hoping that that actually is a positive right now. We don't have services that run to the movie theater, the restaurants, and like Mark said, that is, that is quite a great commodity to the community. And if we can get people able to get to and from, watch a movie, eat, eat some food, get back home, that also provides a great service to East Grand Forks without adding any parking. So, so that is something that was an added feature for our route changes. So, I thought maybe I'd get on his good side with that one, so.
Any other questions for Nancy?
The biggest thing I just wanted to cover, and I've covered it numerous times, is that currently, we pay about $325,000 for our operational service, just for our fixed route, and this is separate from dialer ride. Based on the combination of routes and the night service, it's going to go up to about $500,000. That being said, we're still gonna see maybe a change of about $20,000 right now to our local share. I have kind of committed MINDOT to allowing us to spend more of our federal dollars that we receive in allocations to operations. Before, they would require us to put 50% towards capital and 50% towards operations. And then Minnesota was still paying for our buses, or a majority of our buses, so we had a lot of capital sitting there. So, they are willing to allow us to possibly use more of that funding towards operations. The second thing that they have been doing is to offset a portion of our local share is the administrative fees that I charge is about 20% of my salary, which they are also paying for as part of that operation. So it does offset a portion of what we pay in local share for the service itself. So I guess, I just wanted to go through those new route changes. We're very excited to get that started. We have done public meetings at, oh my goodness, I can't even forget, we've met with all the development homes. We have had them in probably six or seven different locations. We've met at the seniors center. We have actually gone out and contacted service groups, different industries. So, this has been a very long process, but we wanted to make sure that we have addressed every group that is a good transit user, and make sure that their needs were addressed. While we can't address them all, we feel that we are really improving the service, so.
I would just add to the example that Nancy gave of having it take an hour or longer to get to the mall. And I would change the destination. I would change it to, you know, the hospital, or to work, or, you know, we have people that can't use it to do that, because the schedule, I mean, you can't get to work at 8:00 on the old schedules. I mean, it was just literally impossible. So then, they're finding different ways, sir, which is fine, I guess, but to Nancy's point, that's part of the reason why ridership is down. It was, we're spending a lot of money on a system that couldn't do what we were trying to do. So, I appreciate the group, you know, I sat on a couple of the steering committee groups way early on, and I think they did a pretty good job of kind of rolling up the system and not having a ton of like baggage about, man, this is how we do it, this is how we're gonna do it. I think people really said, no, there's a problem, let's fix it. And like I said, it's, people can wait to go to the mall, but they can't wait to go to the hospital, and they can't wait to go to work, and they can't wait to get to school. So, you know, there was three things we're, we're highly addressing this thing, and I think, I hope that we see increased ridership because of the effectiveness of the system, and that the benefits and the changes that we're adding to the system.
And, yeah, and we are continuing to look at a number of different ways to provide whatever service we can through demand response. They have a very lovely program down in NDSU now, where they circle through the campus, and it is solely based on you ask the bus to come, they say, we'll be there within seven minutes, and drop you off and pick you up at, by midnight. Great service. It's kind of an Uber-based with a van. So, you know, as time changes and, and the younger generation is looking for different ways to be transported without a car, we're continuing to try to address their needs and move forward with technology, so.
Anything else on that from anybody? I see none. Appreciate it. Move on to number nine, request to rezone property by Greenway Boulevard. Nancy?
I'm going to combine nine and 10, because they're a combination. This goes to Planning Commission on Thursday. The Pesh's owned property along Greenway Boulevard, the north side of the property has recently been developed by Dave Robertson into townhomes. The south property had not been developed at that time. There's a large cell tower there that requires a setback. Dave has come into an agreement with the Pesh's to continue building along 14th to make a townhouse similar to the ones on the north side, but he's going to put in a triplex. So what he's asking is that, when we zoned it for the overall property, because it was zoned urban expansion, that we put it as an R1 placeholder. At that time, because that's what Pesh's had requested, they didn't know if they were going to build one house, or what they were going to do with it. So, Robertson, with Pesh's as the property owner, are asking that we rezone it to an R2, because we do allow for townhomes there with a zero lot line. So he'll build a three-unit townhome. It will face 14th, access will be off of 14th. It'll look very similar, it'll have the same easement that runs along the east property line. And so, the first one would be the request to rezone the property from R1 to R2, and then the second one would be to then plat the property into four lots. Three lots that the triplex is going to sit on, and then one remaining empty lot that the Pesh's will own, where the cell tower sits, so.
These are really nice townhomes.
They are. He's done a lovely job, yeah. He's continued to do a lot of the things we've asked. So, I asked him to put the sidewalk in, in front of the building. He's agreed to that. We've asked for drainage easements, he's worked on a drainage plan for us, so.
He's been very, very good to work with.
Yes, he has. So, and we're looking at some new developmental changes, trying to get, get a little bit more information at the start of the process, utility plans, drainage plans, those types of things. And so this is kind of a good project for us to get our feet wet. So, that'll go to the Planning Commission on Thursday, and then council on Tuesday. Typically, it doesn't come to a work session, but I figured since I was already here, might as well throw it forward, so.
Mr. Dummer's? Will sidewalks be required in this?
Well, there's a sidewalk going along the north property, that's part of our 2000-
That's going in on this project right now on Greenway Boulevard?
Yep, yep.
But in front of these, on 14th?
Yes.
That's going in as part of this?
No. The sidewalk along Greenway Boulevard is going to be part of our federal project.
Right.
But Mr. Robertson will be putting sidewalk along 14th Avenue, so.
Yep, north to south, because we-
All the way, okay.
Yep, along those three properties, because we require it now for new plats. So, he's just going to put the sidewalk in when he puts in the driveways, so.
And on both sides, okay. And then, just-
Not, not on both sides. There's one already that runs on the north side, so.
What I'm saying, in front of these three on the-
Yes, yep. He will be putting them in front of those three.
Okay. And then, you said he's going to talk about drainage. When we do this as a partial chunk, and I don't know, when you look at the, this one might be a little bit hypothetical, because this property might not lend itself to it because of the potential. But say someone takes this parcel, this giant parcel, and then subdivides it and puts these plots, and they're going to start building on these plots. Now, at some, I mean, there's only so much acreage that they're going to disturb, there's only so much impermeable on there. So, at what point, you know, do you have to start looking at a stormwater pond? Or does, do we run into a problem where if you have an entire parcel that could be developed, and you're only going to do three lots now, and then you do three lots later, and then you do three lots again, do we run into a problem where it's going to be hard to enforce requiring someone to build a stormwater pond, or, and then, and then how do you assess that back to the people that already built five years ago? Like I said, that might be, it might be a bit hard, hypothetical in this case, because of the way this property does it, but I would imagine we could see this.
No, I, I agree with you, and we have been, Jason, Steve, and myself have kind of been in discussions with that, that moving forward, we kind of have to have some sort of a game plan as to how we're going to look at future development. If you disturb more than an acre right now, you need a stormwater permit.
That's correct.
But-
If you create an acre or more of new impervious, then you need to look at stormwater ponds, stormwater retention, so.
Yep.
But like I said, in some of this, you could see how, you could get the creep where, well, we're only going to develop these sections, and then all of a sudden, you, in total, you have three acres of impervious, and nobody to say, well, we needed to dig a pond, who's going to pay for it? Well, not me, because I've already got my house here. I've got my house here.
And yeah, I mean, you're supposed to kind of look at what your ultimate development is. You know, and that's a little different if you're, you know, developing an entire new housing subdivision or whatever, but here, you know, I guess maybe we just cross that bridge if, if and when Pesh ever does anything with that lot for.
It, it is something that we're working towards, really kind of getting a handle on. How we get a handle on that's quite difficult, because it's hard to even get a developer to commit to absolutely everything they're going to want to do. You know, we're, we're not seeing the 50-acre, or the 50 lots, you know, being developed by one developer, and he's got four different types of houses he's building on it, and we're picking where the driveway's going. And, you know, we're doing the, putting in the street and the curb cut, and then they're coming in with three years, it's, you know, it's full. We just, we haven't seen that type of development here. So for us to figure out how to address it has been a slow process, but we know that we need to get better at it, and there's more things that we're going to just start asking for and trying to address as the three of us, so that, you know, we're looking at a project from not just, I mean, from application all the way through to where they're, they've put in the last, you know, blade of grass, so to speak, and they're ready to turn it over to the city, you know, so that we know how develop is, development's going. Because right now, there's still some confusion as to how we get from start to finish. So, we are very much aware of that, and we're working on applications and meetings, and we're putting down a flow chart of responsibility of who covers what, and what we're going to ask for in a drainage plan, and what we're going to ask for in terms of elevation. So, so like I said, this is kind of a good start with more of an easy participant. He was, you know, willing to kind of work with us through this. So, as we get larger projects, we'll see how that goes.
Any else, anything?
I guess I could just add to that one. I agree that the, the development and the new subdivisions coming in is, is a lot slower than, than what would normally lend itself to that type of overall master planning. However, we have taken the very, the, what I think is the first step, because it's something that we've been talking about for the last few years, on the development flow chart on that. One of the things, in my opinion, the next logical step, once we get past that, is the areas that we do have cited for potential future development, once these lots are built out, based on what our current regulations are as far as stormwater permits, trails, sidewalks, those type of things. You have a, we used, I'm not sure, we used to call it a ghost plat, of what that would potentially be out there, where the best sites would be for, under the current stormwater plans, you know, which can change, what, under the current stormwater plans, where would be the best locations geographically wise for those, the sidewalks, the trailheads, those type of things. So, we're getting there. I, I think we do fortunately, in this case, have a little bit of time, just due to the fact that we still have a lot to be built out. And the one that is potentially coming in, I think, does have the stormwater area that we, we're be able to connect to into that. So, I think we have a little bit of time to, to get that fleshed out, but it is something that we are working on.
I think, like I said, that, I think that ghost plat is, is the right way to go about it. The only thing I'd say would make sure that you add is, horizontal around here is easy, it's the vertical that becomes a challenge. So I'd make sure that in that planning, we're count, accounting for elevation, or lack thereof, and, and really understanding that we have to accommodate for that as we move out, you know? And obviously, you guys are bright, I just want to make sure that.
And that is one thing, as part of any new plot, we are requiring a grading plan, so.
Well, I guess, in elevation, where, where I've seen in this particular city, which is different than the ones that I've worked at before, with the fact that it is so flat, that you have to have the, the lift stations and those type of things, because before, with it being as hilly as it was, and they tried to do gravity feed, and they tried to run it through those things, it was particularly for what your sewer and water capacity was going to be out for the potential areas that you're going to be annexing in in the future, were, were a lot more mind-boggling to try to figure that out, just because of the topography. Here, since there, you really don't have topography, it's, it's easier to figure out.
You've got to make hill around your whole city.
All right. Anything else on that?
No.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Update on border city tax credits, Mr. Gordy.
East Grand Forks uses the Border Cities Tax Credit Program differently than any other, other communities that are eligible to use it in Minnesota. We use it to reduce the property taxes. Other communities use it for sales taxes or other types of incentives. What it is, because we do it differently, and there hadn't been any use of Border Cities Program in this area for several years, the state, Department of Revenue, and the county were not aware of how the program actually worked. And our general policy, the city policy, had been a five-year, $100,000-type program. What we're finding, as the program is applied, one, we're eligible for disparity credits, as well as Border Cities credits, but the two programs are mutually exclusive. You can either use the disparity credit program, or you can use the Border Cities Program. The Border City, the tax rate under the disparity program is capped at 1.6%. The effective tax rate for the properties that were, we have applied the Border Cities Program is 0.26%. So there's a significant reduction in, in property taxes for those, for those businesses. But in doing that, property taxes, the credits are used up faster than what we had expected, because we expected them to be done in roughly $20,000 per year increments. For one of the businesses that we provided tax credits, that's going to work out very nicely, because they use up somewhere around $18,000 worth of tax credits per year. For the other business, the first two years of the program, they have used up 72% of the allocation already, $72,000 of the $100,000. And the, neither the county nor the Department of Revenue wish to use a partial allocation, so we need to start thinking in terms of the years that we wish to give this benefit, as opposed to the dollars. And the years, I'm working with the county now to get an, an estimate of what the total tax credits will be, and we will be getting that before we bring any of these things forward to the city council, to the EDA, and to the city council. So effectively, what we need to do is, we'll need to amend the one agreement that we have with a business, so that we can get them to have their third year of tax credits, and then they will go back into the disparity program. That will need, we will need about $10,000 to $12,000 worth of the tax credits. We have a balance of roughly $450,000 of tax credits right now, available to us, but we're subject to the whims of the legislature for how often they decide to give the communities a lot of their tax credits. So, we'll, as we get- So, as we get applications now, one other thing I'm doing is asking the county for an estimate of the amount of tax credits that will be needed, so that when we bring proposals to the EDA, we'll make some recommendation to, and to yourselves, because you are the body that approves these tax credits, you'll be able to have an idea of what the tax credits are. We maybe have to make a small adjustment, depending upon the duration that we wish to have these, but what we'll probably do is something to the effect that it'll be for this many years, or this many credits, and whichever comes first will be the end of the program, you'll have to go back into the, into the disparity program. So it's different, because we're doing something different, but it means that we can make a small change, but it will be able to allow us to use the program effectively.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? Thank you, sir. Number 12, amendment to limited use permit for non-motorized recreation trail, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to apologize, I don't know where I was at when I put this RCA together, because this is for the wrong connection, the, the one that I wrote. This particular one is for the west side of 220, not the connection from the Kennedy Bridge to Greenway Boulevard, which, for whatever reason, I was thinking when I put this together. So anyways, this was originally, if I remember correctly, set a little bit before I got here, but before I understand, we had gotten permission from MINDOT for putting in that trail along the west side of 220, I believe down to 17th. This particular amendment to that would be then for allowing this from 17th down to, what is it, Highway 2? Is that correct? So I guess with that, this would allow us to put that, or to put that trail in, I guess, as needed. So that's the kind of extent of my knowledge on it. I know Mr. Emery has some additional knowledge, if you'd like to add any.
No, that's, I mean, that's exactly right. And again, this trail that we're looking to, you know, put in, again, it's part of our federal project that we'll be bidding next Monday, June 18th. This original limited use permit, again, did go from 23rd down to 17th. That trail at the time was actually only constructed from 23rd down to 20th, but, so all they've done is extended the, the permit to include the properties basically from 17th to Highway 2. So it is basically a 10-year agreement. MINDOT has said that, you know, that's typical, a 10-year agreement. After 10 years, they just kind of review, make sure everything is going good as far as maintenance, that type of stuff, and, you know, then they would renew it, so. I guess, can answer any questions you may have from that?
Anybody have any questions on that? I see none. All right. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Ooh, who died better?
Second.
Second, Emery, fell. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion is carried, means adjourned.